Hello. 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 Hello.
Mr. Bailey, can you try talking again?
Yes, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Can you all hear him? I can hear you on my computer.
Nah, I can hear you fine now. Couldn't hear anything before.
Can... Okay, um, did you hear what Commissioner Firehawk asked about why you weren't here where you are and...
Yeah, I have finishing, I had COVID last, I contracted COVID last week and so I'm still in the last few days of quarantine.
And where are you located right now?
Uh, at my home in the Rio District.
Thank you. He said he was at his home in Rio.
Five four three Tyree Lane, Charlottesville, Virginia, two two nine zero one.
Um... Um, he should, he should be able, you should be able to see him on the screen in a minute. I hope.
Yeah, so surely.
Yes, yeah, I can, I can see him.
Alright, so, um, Mr. Bailey, we can't hear you very well if you're not well enough to say that we actually had you as part of deliberation. So, my recommendation is because we don't have an additional speaker to hook up to the computer at this moment, that we just have you just listen in but not participate in going into discussion. I apologize for that, but further, it's not a stop for this. Can you hear us something?
I think so. I think, I mean, I heard some, I think I made out what you said, which was, uh, listen in but not participate in discussion because you can't hear me, which I can barely hear you sometimes too, so that's fair.
Yeah, he, he did hear, yeah, that, he did hear what you said about he's gonna listen but not participate and, and vote because he can't hear you very well and you can't hear him.
I just think you're being risky that only half the session was heard.
There is part of the procedures that say that if, if a commissioner loses our ability, that the committee can't continue. Um, I mean, the other alternative would be to take a brief recess to see if we can resolve the technology. But otherwise, I think we'll do this.
I was just continuing my reasoning for that except it's not a highly contentious topic for this evening. I know, yeah, I just, I just thinking it would take us half an hour to resolve something. I hope we have forum.
None of the subject matter that's on the agenda relevant for whether you put a decision over or not, but it's instantly chairs.
Well, I just think we should move forward. They're listening. Daniel's team are okay with it. They're largely in line. Okay, so we might have a motion about that. Alright, so any, are there any other matters not listed on the agenda for the public? Anything that, anything else to report to the commission that's not on this agenda? I think no one coming forward. Move on to the next agenda. I know the next agenda, I am making consent agenda, but any commissioner like a fully item from this consent agenda. Just forward. So we'll have discussion on that item. Sorry, since you pulled the item or elected, Del, would you like to assess?
Yes, um, I think one of the things there, it looks like when you look at the map of the district, it seems like there's an apple country that should exist between working then and territory regard to maybe structure there and probably have to see that whole matchup. Um, the other thing is, it seems like we're removing a few lot of credentials there I haven't been to sell loss. Maybe, um, the narrative we said is when we talked about, I think there's, or a moving balance making a certain item to the best of us, but there are always some depth that's there probably. If your role design, including the addition to water, to accommodate that. And then if you add that. So, let me translate the translation that, um, I think there was some, I believe there's probably there's not the window that, you know, that's that. But there were these two areas on that map that you see there is, must be part of it. And there's two areas, I still think there could be opportunities there, or, there's on-site as well. Some of the, the, or some, some goes to, I think, say, toward.
I wonder if anyone from staff is able to comment on some of that application.
Certainly, uh, this is a major topics in condition. Even though it's like the associate.
He's working on it right now. Not sure why. Why need to take?
Could I recommend taking a brief pause to fix a technical issue? Seems like nothing is projecting.
I feel this way a lot. We will adjourn for, how many minutes do we think, ten? And no reason.
At least, no more than ten.
We're on a ten-minute recess until six twenty, for sure.
Okay, we're now ready for you to start.
Right, I'd like to review this meeting on that long-term plan for July twelve, twenty twenty, to the recess and try to resolve some technical difficulties which are in parts of resolve. One resolution we're unable to achieve was to make it possible for people who are remote to provide commentary remotely through the web link. However, if there are members of the public wish to comment on any of the items for tonight, they can do so by calling in. And this is the phone number that is in the official invitation that we're used to link on Zoom. The phone number is one eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. That's eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. We'll not be able to have Mr. Bailey participating though because the people remotely cannot see the presentations from the dais. So, we will not have full creation of participating. So, I also want to note that it's actually not the legal requirements to have remote participation by Zoom with something operated courtesy of the policies that we cannot fix some computer issues this evening. But again, people can call in and we will all be able to hear their comments. If they would like to review any of the materials for this evening, we are on our online website. That's the same we can, we can do this soon. So, that, anything else?
That and church is one other item. So you've given an eight hundred number. There's also a webinar ID that goes with that.
I'm sorry.
And that webinar ID number is eight nine one seven eight seven six two five zero nine. And it can also be found on the Almoral.org webpage.
And so with that, we will go back to the item that we were speaking about, which was the consent agenda item that was pulled forward for SE two zero two two zero 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 one six H two C area C block, two sidewalk and partnership waivers. And Mr. Murray, you were just talking about, you're concerned with losing some of the green space and whether some other things could be done such as banning mortgages or pretty somewhere else and to compensate for not having those partnerships.
Yeah, um, comprehensive, um, two hundred and five, um, talks about, talks about street health and conservation. Um, I think we also have, you know, a lot of kind of building spots. And explicitly calls out, um, pretty well, type, well, use practices, land, all the relations. And so, to the previous of those procedures, not the last. I'm just wondering maybe, um, if we're talking about second, third.
No, we didn't. I have a lot of practice. They're right now. Um, I, I think that staff can work with the advocate, but I mean, some of that, I think, is a different issue. So I asked them to comment back to you because I know that the awareness is there. So, staff, would you comment back?
Sir, Commissioner Murray, uh, we've been in contact with the advocate. They're certainly willing to offer additional pre-plantings if I work with us, find ways to offset the loss of those community trips. They've actually submitted, they're full cycle, they showed additional plantings at our show on some of these things as well. So, people certainly work with them to try and identify additional materials.
Sounds well. Would you have a great example of why folks up in Florida would depend? Any other comments on that item or other commissioners? If not, maybe exactly.
So, the top of the list. That'd be, nice, so, oh. Well, if there would be any. Uh. Sure, to show.
I view the page where the property is, is on most board. Over, so the top left of the screen. Um, I believe there is a A A special grant, one B, right in the corner along for a farm drive. And that is something that certain people had in the site planning process to ensure that the pipelines are provided.
Wait, a motion, uh, I never had to vote for this whole court of motions to vote on S.
Well, if you want two ways, either somebody can move to approve the consent agenda or alternatively, Mr. Rattlebach has put up several motions for each of the two waivers. And it can be done that way, individual votes for each of the requests.
Okay, so move motion to assess the consent agenda for a second. Seconded, any discussion? All right, follow the vote, please.
Mr. Claiborne? Mr. Murray? Mr. Bivins? Mr. Karazana? Ms. Firehawk? Mr. Missile? Thank you.
Want the next item to this evening, which is a public hearing. Maybe we have to staff for this. This is for Z N A two zero two one zero 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 underlying party.
Did you name the number of the mission? Running is the Red Hot Guns, who planted their own off on a train. Like your chair, a flickering, regarding of resumption application, Z N A twenty twenty one eleven, all there is H one Ryan. Do you find, I know the view on the context implementation of this site as high as this room? This property and this application consists of five parcels located along five of their grass. Um, the chart shows, um, the stretch to the south. The worst season television is to southwest. And the gardens on garden center in the late season. The review of this proposal, and this requesting should be done in a, a, five parcels of eight point two acres from R six to thirty on in residential housing for a maximum of two acres. The existing uses of these five parcels include, where parcels, each of the small and detached house and the big parcel, largest one, is a much bigger parcel than all the two acres. And then it should, it should be mainly of these five parcels with the heart. They keep perfect. Based on the area that people create through high right. Is a small commercial, it's part of the five. They show a film of the location that are also in R six. And then there are a parcel in light industry and all that is directly outside very. For the companies of plane, and these five parcels are located within the basis of that master plan. They are largely designated as certain presidential, which is so large. Um, the federations, you have to enter right in the presentation against some people. They're open and started here, along with supporting the city. Virtual office and service pieces. A small portion of, I mentioned, I mentioned A two, which is the larger one, the third parcel. So. Um, it is set made, this new insurance, and it would be, uh, people, right, so right. Um, overall, it's not a paper, that's a certain property. And in the neighborhood, it's a, it's a, the commercial detail, along this property, three, twenty, per acre. And, uh, this is from my master plan, that's my maximum item, four stories, four essential. This, um, slide is shows the contractual plan that the captain has provided in their accommodation plan, showing the, uh, the, uh, score each of the seven buildings that were proposed. The ready areas are the cattle ways and burning blocks. And the new precincts are the bumpers, the mini recreational areas of the property. By most specific forms proposed, our condition now is requesting that room of two hundred fifty five units. The unit that is supposed to be managed by family located across seven buildings. And with eight point two acres, it's beginning at three hundred five acres, one point two acres per acre. The buildings are basically maximum of three or four stories, the building is along, they come on high of class. And also submit a set act waiver request to use a special exception. And patient or S and come from my actual one. Requesting, um, to waive the set act requirement for these four storey building, they're into. The applicant is proposing to provide verbal housing at fifteen percent of the constructed units and eight percent may not be compliant policy. And to be compared to how in twenty five percent of the site is required, uh, known in twenty five percent of the site is required to be open space, and the act is demonstrated with a, that the company first. Confirming segment stage. Um, there are the spaces to use a ten opening stage of her around the entire perimeter of the site. This was two main recreational areas, one about quarter acre, uh, sorry, about half acre in the center of the site, and then one across the acre in southeast corner. Um, this development would expect to generate a lot of, like, forty three students across all three schools and levels. In this area, alcohol, as well as its own capacity, and these additional students would, uh, intake. And, uh, our, uh, good with capacity, and that consideration, actually, well. Regarding the assessment circulation, I didn't print the site here, which is a potential food, a private grass and interest design of course, the child, thank you, and save. And currently based on the art of regulation, that right, which is being provided into question nature. The applicant is providing a case of the, the private groupage. The applicant is also providing to, um, the outside, the location on the site alone, library, and so providing a new bench and shelter. And this also currently, this is, I think, that's. Uh, to accommodate this multi-use path and bus stop, the applicant is, like, a property owner to be heard of on private day. The travelways and interior of the site would be just interior travelways, there is an extension to private tubes, or where, both. The inside to the shelter, the location. Access even, lots of, uh, on the fact, you have people. Other than, and this place, um, great that, uh, to more, to save, inside lots of, you know, of our. Also, completely, uh, for future information to create, perhaps, or, uh. And as determined, uh, for. Our shelter. The one, uh, after any difficult, this request is a, is a, with this all condition. In all high school, which can achieve, I think, capacity. For staff recommendations, that does recommend that people have a, using, that's giving from. Set act, the social extension request to modify the set act. And also, I see, I have now.
Thank you. Staff, please say yes or no.
Basically, there are a couple of good questions. Raise that for example. Number of comments related to the, uh, need for, it's, you mentioned the trouble places, uh, of buildings. And for example, that, if I said that, I don't have full. And you said, uh, another one, if, that we might, I might see wrong. Oh, no, the one, um, along the Ryan, on the street, if you look at that area, you have a lot of overlapping locations. And, uh, right, which, uh, in the height impacts the amount or available ground. How much is the evidence you all, if you, um, before this, this part? You feel it's sort of, how, that you get some reasonable.
Certainly, I'll need to work with the applicant by day on extending the frontage there along library to create sufficient bit, uh, if we say, if you are driven or, um, thanks for, just earlier, um, to allow for some, plenty of, along private, so, something of this feature within this. Or, areas. And, uh, along. But, um, what would be appropriate?
Great, I appreciate this. And Christian, uh, this is all we, all we also did during these conversations was ask the applicant to provide some illustrations. And so those are also included, uh, of this application that shows some typical, uh, sections and perspectives of that landscaping, to make sure that would fit and see what it might look like.
Even though I'm working on, this is just for the, 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 the illustrations is going to be, it's all, uh, how would you make this, and we can, well. So when we say.
For the number of units, from that percent of open space, which in these training areas as well as required recreational facilities. And so um the clubhouse. Do the quality of recreation facility in ours, and it does require certain. Uh, facilities, playground, building, those are the things we are in site plan. However, the applicant has a site plan and submit substitution requests for due by team directors to allow for certain other things. Other than these required of training facilities and house.
Yes, um, we just don't know, they're asking about the sound of range facility, but we would be. Um, and also the kind of fact of shows and the earth and the friends. Um, we would be able to solve. Um, we do have the documents of. And the uh, Chris, this is going to translate to. Like contact with the university, say one. Man, there's more to this, is I. I'm all, it's certainly something. I'm sure, is that something? He's interested in doing, or willing to consider this research loss, it's not on this.
So um. During the segment stage with uh plant saving and everything that's required by sending coordinates, any plant saving required by application plan for this. Or for the applicant to ensure um the required plant saving is planted and plant saving does have to follow the approved plant list of the county. Which is mostly native plants. And I know past applicants are very good about working with us to make sure that native plants are needed in those planting areas.
Maybe I'll take that. I remember.
It's just a little bit. Our page, so there's a, in the building six and five, the interior building that they're asking for. Step back. So they called for five foot setback. Is that from the sidewalk?
Um, it would be a minimum of five feet from the. Line of the access.
What we're seeing, and by the way, it really. Plans, which is something that we don't always get, and it's very helpful for us to. Make this type of determination, particularly when they're asking for. So. Have staff verified that within those five feet of the access statement. We can accomplish. Um, what is, what is laid out in this illustrative plan, which is a. Um, street lawn sidewalk and then elastic.
Yes, from all we've reviewed so far, that will be um for the, I think, for the illustrious thing.
And keeping us, commissioner, we're asked that over the applicant. We're ready to hear the presentation of the applicant, please. And if you want to go, I'll die off the can. Continue to sit, boost yourself, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair, I know we're longer than the law on the race on, but here, other than the applicant tonight. Share our share here, we have a number of representatives of our projects here. My colleague, Megan Dazza, our planner, we also have Scott Collins, Collins Engineering. Two representatives of the applicant group, um, two government state partners. And also that our traffic engineer, um, Paul Fitprint online. Um, he, of course, it's a little challenging for his ear. Um, so if we do need them, hopefully we won't be consulting with this ear, but maybe still remember to get them on the line. But we have to share the. Own number that is the right. The color of our slides are. It's very hard to do the same on certain history of virtual now. But we've been especially bad at all. Everybody can hear. Thank you, we'll start here. I think by you all are generally from a local patient, especially those of you all around, this is all. Up in still call the heritage hall site. This is obviously a classic example of inbuilt health and development. Just to refresh you those memories of you from Rio though, and you have the existing driveway. That though, this is probably. To prove that you're a. Side of the country. During the sidewalk. If you can sort of see that any of this in Rustup there is right, she's opposed, but there's in the. They've seen Rustup Shelter in better location also the bench. In the existing houses. This is our application plan. This is as a planned residential development, if there's any surprise, application plan would be binding. Set destinations, the project, the project developed in general for this plan, so building on looks, streets, parking areas. All those means that you see. This is an example, you can see from one of the renderings that you have regarding open space. To try to demonstrate the quality of the open space and even this money are relatively on nerve. That we could, players on, on team, they can really tell us verify quality. And any areas to the rest. So I see a number of benefits here. This is in the comments and plans, variations of the land for the privacy. Providing the standard for the housing requirements, satisfied with the model principles. Significant emphasis on motion mobile, transportation options. We need to mention the advocates and its location of revenue. One of the most important things in the office, that it's so close to. Um, shopping areas and local centers, schools. Prior to mine, smaller than location. From last time. And it also offers a number of accounts and machine. And one of these are a few of the zones. So this slide, we have the, of course, multi use path or trail, or on the ground now with sidewalk, but the human factor strength, and there's no. Kind of area of pedestrian, I mean, sidewalk is much wider and will support bicyclists as well as pedestrians. With because we can relocate the bus stop to a better location, we would add a shelter and a bench. Also, we're going to use my class. Sidewalk and pedestrian, so it's essentially anywhere we can put a sidewalk and crosswalk and shown one. Also have. Application plan provides commitments regarding to building heights, the locations of the buildings, all the areas you see in the group are building ambulants. The way the buildings will have to be located within those ambulants. For housing movement. Tied this curving sign, tallest buildings will be located away from Rio though. Will be four stories, if not all that tall, but they can rebuild for four days and long ride, it will be three stories. And this is the curving is located to the side of. So it's probably just a passing over. But I mentioned a bit, um, just answer your question, so we. Sent quite a lot of time to stop on this issue of ensuring and you can achieve um with this only ARB with this house just input. To ensure that there was, so we can say, and actually, the plan was ten to twelve feet in all. Mentions, so yeah, she had it. And sure, we're going to space that. The architectural report again will have jurisdiction over the design and certain issues. We have state brokers on. Also happy. Well, which, again, the position, I think, that they don't go too much. This is, meaning for everyone, um, efficient technology. There's a blinking stress and trees along the perimeter of the way. So a lost ship plan will include some of these illustrations for food. This speed doesn't break the justice to this career. Mr. David's message just goes to truth, but I'll come out with this also. Those truths, just examples, but it's also um, we have other planes in the world that. Um, there's lawn, lawn areas, taverns, base. Beds and shares, it's really a place for friends to gather and. And the top lot or hang on the grass and maybe do all day and not lay over and help. Which are with the plants. Cheats and this high quality and many of the. Here likewise, it's a real separation of the earth of states. Those are set up more. States for. So that. Challenge roles of looking to find. We got street state, early street state. And here, although that. Possibly body, buildings here to the end. To the right of these, these industrial things, focus of ice, after designs. That we showed these as. Very opposite, religious or constantly scale. That they can be difficult, much into this. Um, but it does.
See and appreciate um the care that has gone into the design, the sufficient space for plantings, the benefits of that. Much higher quality path. And it's kind of tucked away there, but that's where the bus stop and the shelter would go. This is looking up the existing driveway, how that would look to address your question, Mr. Sarzana. About with regard to the planting strips, the sidewalks and the setbacks from the edge of the travelway. There's perhaps a better shot of the clubhouse showing how that area could be. Uh, programmed and designed to again provide for high quality amenities for the residents. And this is a little close up of that area and how that would look. The one thing that gets a little lost in the shuffle, I think, is the small dog area. At one point, I'd asked him to put it.
And uh, we talked a little bit about. The thinking about those. Go to one, be done by. Opportunities or certain examples of how the squivers and. These are some ideas and examples of why all kinds, say, others. He's regularly in the sugar products and uses it, they're always working to incorporate in their projects from where they come. There to some of these are committed to such a lot on top. So we'll sell whole iPod and correct it, yes, and most of them. Remember, you know, working, I have these pure individual. White party cons. Charlotte, which is now single. Who are presenting. Again, this is prepared, you can serve me as part of this. The plan of the presentation. For the moment, all of these is setback. All we did is the long. It's all. So, okay, thanks for. Questions for the applicant, so thank you.
Pull your microphone down, please. The benefits of having them dispersed throughout the community, particularly they'll be of varying sizes. And the buildings will all be slightly different in terms of their unit layout. And the composition of the various units, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, so I think they will be.
Okay, that I think that would be very important in terms of our vision for a healthy community. Um, back when the illustrious plans, thank you for providing those, and guess what question is for those units that are facing Rio? Understanding they're just blocks, but is the intention at this uh point, look at the, those are the backs of the buildings. Perhaps facing Rio, but I, with all the trees planted there, that's the way it appeared, I'm just curious, do you know if that will?
Well, the, the access to them will be behind, away from Rio. So that where the parking is, but I've, I'm quite certain that the architectural review board guidelines will require. Those, the sides of the buildings along Rio to have. A very high quality appearance, they won't look like the back of the buildings.
Let a big black wall go.
Yeah, certainly wouldn't be a blank wall, there'd be some, I think there's gonna be balconies probably and.
Okay.
Um, but those are the types of things that. Mr. Missile probably can say it best, but I believe that's even covered in the ARB design guidelines. But regardless, um, I feel confident they will.
Sure.
Require that to, to look.
Actually, and last, the final question so far, um, the sustainability features, the slide you had. I was trying to take notes as you were speaking, are those commitments for this project or things typically the applicant could do?
Those are things that they typically um have in their communities or work to and to provide whenever they can. Um, most likely, all of these things, things like, again, uh, electric vehicle chargers, they tell us that's just market standard, you pretty much have to have those these days. Likewise, it becomes a competitive issue to provide. Obviously, good wifi for telecommuters and those types of things, obviously, the density is built into this project at thirty two units per acre. Um, but things like low flow, low flow fixtures and faucets, I think are also pretty standard in terms of, um, you know, high efficiency. Um, appliances, I'm not sure if you even get anything other than that these days, but uh, the bus stop in the path are. Um, a commitment to the plan, as are the bike racks. Um, wifi controlled thermostat's not a commitment, but. Um, wifi controlled thermostat's not a commitment, but again, provides, um, a nice amenity that frankly, the market is demanding these days, um, for those benefits.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just follow along the same vein because I have similar comments. I listened to the, sorry, the echo is weird. I listened to the public hearing, uh, that was, uh, not the, the community meeting, I should say. And, um, somebody asked about sustainable features like permeable pavement. And the response from the team was, yes, we'll always try to do that whenever we can, blah, blah, blah. My experience, a lot of times people say, well, those are nice features, but it's always, uh, more expensive to do that. So we don't do it at the end of the day. We don't get the permeable pavement. We don't get the, the more green and progressive elements, which actually do save money. If people look at the life cycle of maintaining a stone mortar pond, for example, it's actually cheaper to reduce the volume going to that because you have to take care of the pipes as well as dredge it. So I guess my question really is, um. I, I don't know if it's really a question, maybe more of a comment. A lot of these things that you're showing us here that you're saying are, uh, you know, industry standard or the standard of this applicant to try to provide this to make the apartments competitive and make it a great place to live that, you know, will fill up quickly. But I, I'm just curious why not, I'm not asking for a proffer from the dais, to be very clear. But why aren't some of those things, if you're just going to do them, why are they not included as part of your standards? Because I, I would love for your team to set the standard that other developers coming forward to us would say, wow, they put that in their list of things they pledged to do. Uh, because there's a lot of great stuff on this list.
Yeah.
And I, I'd love it if it were on your commitment to be required rather than just things we will probably do. So I don't know what your comment is on that, if it's standard, like you said.
Well, one, I appreciate the comment and frankly, this was part of our hesitation of, of talking about these issues because we appreciate the fact that it can be perhaps frustrating for you all to hear, oh, this is what we're going to try to do, but yet not commit to them. Honestly, they're just not in a position right now to be able to commit with certainty. They haven't designed the buildings yet. Um, they're still at the rezoning stage. Again, what they've telling me is, yeah, those are things we do, but we're just not ready to make commitments there yet. Um, I don't know if those are the types of things that, at the rezoning stage, you know, it does also add to the, um, challenges in terms of preparing the site plan, reviewing, enforcing the site plans over time. Those then become zoning regulations that have to be enforced. How do you enforce wifi controlled thermostats, those types of things? So.
Yeah. Well, some, some things on the list are things that you would have to work out in a site plan that you'd have to have all your numbers correct in terms of spacing, like your charging stations. But other things like low flow faucets have nothing to do with the, the arrangement of the buildings and the width of a sidewalk.
Right.
So just, just take this food for thought.
Yeah.
I, I think too with our board of supervisors, who is a fairly green board of supervisors, that they would also love to see things as commitments. So.
And I'll just reiterate again, one, I appreciate the feedback. One of the best things about this project is its location. It, it's located so well in design with the additional multimodal. We hope that that will be the biggest benefit in terms of sustainability is it make it easier for folks who live here to walk to school, walk to work, walk to the park. Um, you know, there's, any, any of those amenities and stores nearby make it easier for them. Hopefully not need a car or use their car a lot less often. But I certainly appreciate your comments.
Yeah, okay. I'll leave it at that. Going this direction.
Thank you. I was just sort of a couple of clarity issues here. So on page, on attachment four, you've used a star to identify where proposed bike racks are. There's two of them there, I think. And but yet there are one, two, three, there are four additional stars at the sort of top right hand side of the, of the, of the page and wondering if those stars are, go to the note that total number of residential units within the neighbor service center comprehensive plan, land use designation shall not exceed twenty units, or if those stars are the proposed bike racks or something else.
Those are the proposed locations of the bike racks.
So all of those are bike racks. Okay.
So and they wouldn't necessarily be exactly in those locations.
But as I just, just sort of enumerating that there are that many bike racks.
Correct.
Which is awfully odd since I don't live, I live in that area and I never see that many people on bikes, but that's another story, um, which I don't need to get into right now. Um, what I would expect though, and I do so, so while there are the proposed bike racks, it would be nice if you were just to put the proposed EV chargers or something like that in there too. But I'll leave you for your team to get to that as you move forward. What I do have is sort of a couple of statements about, about my sort of. This is, I'm only stating this, I realize I'm not, I'm not the ARB, so I can't do anything. It just becomes. Wary some to always see rectangle been building, buildings which are large rectangles, particularly on such an interesting site. And so we're going to give up that glade of trees at the front for a parking lot, which they're probably in some creative design there. You could have maintained that glade of trees on the left-hand side as you go in and do something with those, do something with buildings six and five that don't create a four-story corridor if we in fact go along with the desire for the setback. So then that brings me to my second piece. I'm really going to struggle with that corridor there, the buildings five and six, because it feels like we're putting four stories in a place that people are going to have to drive through, they're going to have to walk through, that it becomes sort of this dominant piece. Similar to what we saw on Rio Road in an, in an interesting project that they actually did something really nice to sort of deal with the not having a cavern as you drove into the, um, RST, I think it was, that they did something interesting so that you didn't have this cavern effect there. So that's troublesome for me, having that there. So if I could perhaps see something that shows that there really is a lot of space there and it's really not going to be a cavern, then perhaps I will feel better about that. But losing a layer of trees and then having a cavern, the concrete and windows and buildings there is sort of, I struggle with that just sort of on a piece of property that actually, um, is begging to be designed on, but it's also begging to have a design that's actually interesting of what you, your, your clients, Ms. Long, have the ability to do. You bring interesting clients to us. You bring clients with, with good ideas. And so this is, this, that, that area right there has troubled me. And then the other thing which is, which is just my own annoyance is that the, um, the rehab hospital changed its name, so it's no longer the heritage on Royal. And even, even if I'm being snarky, which perhaps I am, I don't know what the, I don't know what Rio's heritage is. But I can tell you, since it used to be Route Ten, that that Route Ten was not a heritage that I would set, that I would necessarily want to promote. So before it got converted into Rio. And so I understand, this is Julian, from Jack Jewitt District being snarky. But, um, I just struggle with the whole idea that they were calling something the heritage on Rio at this time.
If, if you don't mind, could I go ahead and address that? Cause I, I intended and in fact, our clients asked me to address this at the beginning and I neglected to do so. First, let me say, that's not an unreasonable, uh, comment and our, our clients raised the same issue. They asked me, please let them know, this is just a placeholder made up name. You have to come up with a project name when you submit an application and we literally struggled. What do we call this? There was already an application, a rezoning called Rio Road West or something. And so we struggle, what can we call it? How will people be able to identify it? We came up with this name frankly, on fairly short notice and then later realized your, your comment that this might not be the right, not only is it only temporary, but it could have negative connotations. So please be assured, this will not be the project's name. It will have a much better name, but it's merely a placeholder.
I understand, just don't let it be.
Perhaps not as thought, obviously not as thoughtful as it should have been.
No, that's why I appreciate that. It doesn't need to be the snarky planning commissioner's place either.
No, it's, it's, um.
That's not a name, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not a name.
We need that feedback these days, right? That you're, you're in others', um, feedback and impressions, reactions to that name is very helpful. I didn't think of that at first and then I should have, so.
So if we could go back to, to building six and five and just show us, and show us an image and help me under, help me become more comfortable with, to me, when I looked at that, and I, again, I'm thankful as, as our colleagues have said, I'm thankful for, for, for the illustrations because that really does give you a sense of place. But then I'm also, um, sensitive to some of the conversation that's taking place in our sister, in our, in our, in our sister, um, city about what's happened on, on West Main Street.
And sure.
I want this to be, I want this to be warmly embraced and that's why I'm bringing this up.
Couple thoughts and, and we, we thought about this a lot as well. And I'll say a couple of broad issues. One, this is a very urban area. So we're trying to balance achieving as much on the high end of the density as possible. And as you know, as well as anyone, that means taller buildings. The buildings are only four stories. I think once these buildings are designed, it will look, it'll help a lot when they're just these blank gray buildings. It, it's looks pretty imposing. I can appreciate, um, it's a compact urban site. So we really worked hard to balance the, you know, trying to get the density at the right amount, frankly, make the project viable economically, um, and have an urban project in an urban location. Um, but that's why we committed to having, you know, the planting strips and the sidewalks, the setback away from there. Um, that's not an urban thoroughfare there. It's just a driveway that leads back to a rehabilitation facility. Not that that's not important, but it's not a, um, a, a driveway a large number of people will be traveling on day after day. So we, we tried to balance that as well, that, um, okay, we need, we want to make this look nice, but it's not like, it's really the employees, visitors and residents at that facility who will be going through. So.
I feel much better than that. And, and so I, I, while I would like to have that, those glade, that glade of trees over there because I actually do think that gives it a, that's actually an interesting sort of urban, sort of wooded area. Um, I do appreciate that there are budgets which have to be met and there are, there are, um, ways in which we get greens, green goes to be able to do a, do a project. And so, so thank you for that and it helped me. I guess I'll follow it in, at the site review and make sure that I won't have any, I can't do anything except for be noisy. Um, but make sure that that, that doesn't have that cannon effect there.
Yeah, and it is really hard to, it is really hard to get that because we're just, they look like warehouses. Obviously, that's not what it's going to look like, but if there were like balconies or even just.
Oh.
Juliet type or something that put life out, you know, you could wave to your neighbor walking by. It wouldn't just be a wall of the building that had some life to it, some articulation.
Ground floor, patios for the ground floor levels, balconies above.
It'll feel like you're walking through a residential area.
Absolutely.
My dear friend.
Exactly.
Go and have wine and cheese. Okay.
And again, it's really just a driveway as opposed to a street, unlike West Main Street, which is obviously very different. So.
Been very busy.
Hopefully for the context and the location and all of the commitments combined will help avoid that concern.
Feeling, yeah. Got you. That was a valid point. Fred, anything?
Thanks, uh, thanks Valerie. It's, it's almost like you and your team have done this before. Um, I appreciate the quality of the application and, uh, and the presentation. Um, a couple of questions. One is, I was trying to, and not to get into too much detail, but a little hung up on these little tiny slivers of planting areas along the boundaries. Um, and I understand the, the width, and this is a very helpful illustrative. So on this one, for example, if you look where that single family home is, just to the really basically dead bottom center of this image. Um, I was trying to figure out the contours and I guess my question is, because it's difficult to see the existing contours. I guess my question is, are there retaining walls around the perimeter? And if so, where? Or are we meeting grade at the, uh, around the perimeter?
And where's the, here's the. I don't believe there is on that side, but I'm going to ask my team to tell me if I'm wrong. There were originally some retaining walls, what I'll call a backwards retaining wall along the frontage.
Yeah.
But not on that side.
Okay.
That is going to be a three-story building as well, just as, instead of a four, which was.
Ah.
To try and be a bit of a transition to a single family home. Um, no guarantee on this. What our clients have told us is that they have worked, they reached out with, to that neighbor and he is, he is at least told them that his plan is to redevelop his property as well and not keep it as a single family home. Nevertheless, we, we work to be sensitive and, and Mr. Riedelbach did as well, make sure, um, that we were being sensitive to that issue and addressing it.
Great.
So we hope that we've, we've done a good job and tried to leave again, a little bit of extra space there for plantings to provide that buffer and transition.
Sure. Okay. I'll, I'll take your word for it that those all tie back and there are no retaining walls.
I'm going to let Megan chime in on or correct me on anything. Go ahead.
Good evening. Megan Adosso with Williams Mallin. If you look on page, I guess it's sheet five of the application plan, there is a cross-section that shows the, um, relationship to the one-story. It does have a basement, so the, um, street-facing side of the house is actually falling back. And so you can see it does have a basement in the back of, um, the house. And so you could see that relationship that are in that section. It's section, section number one.
Which one?
That one. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I can see if you point to me.
Oh, yeah. But we have a.
Yeah, we'll pull it up on our slides.
This guy? Yeah, I'm with you. Okay. So it's basically level at that point. Here's, here's that house that they're calling.
No, right there.
I pulled it up on the screen for you.
Uh, you're the best. Thank you. Yep, got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
My apologies for getting, we had that. I should have remembered for that very reason.
That's great. Um, the other is the dog area. You showed a picture of the dog area. I just want to make sure I understand where it is on the plan and is it?
So.
Yeah, that one.
That's the rendering and on the plan, if you go to the, uh, sheet one, which is the plan, it's on the right-hand side. Let me just go back to the plan itself. It's probably the easiest way to show you.
Okay, so it's actually shown, that's my question. It's shown in travel.
So it's.
Travelway parking envelope?
So this area here.
Yep.
Is an, is the amenity area, that rectangular green area. And then in the renderings where we show it, let me first start here. That area is here.
Yeah.
And the dog park is right, right down there.
Got it. Thank you.
It's a little in the illustrations, it's fairly obscured by the trees. So here it is again. It's a fairly small area. And again, this is just illustrative. It might end up being bigger. Um.
No, that makes sense. It looked like in that other image you were showing, it was at the corner and was in the travelway area. So that makes sense. Um, you mentioned having a meeting with Margaret to talk about the frontage and I appreciated that. That was really helpful. Did you talk to her at all about the step back waiver? Did you guys discuss that?
Uh, not specifically because this, I, I don't think so, but the step back waiver only is for the three buildings that are not on Rio.
But they're visible.
Correct. Yeah. So it's for buildings five, six and seven.
Yep.
Is where we've requested that. Um.
I was relating, referring to that image you showed where the five and six were in the background and kind of higher. So I think the ARB is going to weigh in on them because they're.
Sure.
Okay, like that. Yeah, that one.
They don't breathe that way in that. Uh, institutional gray block.
Yeah.
Um.
And this, the step back wouldn't be there anyway, right? Step back would be on the other side. Yeah.
That's one of the issues. It's, that's unclear under the zoning ordinance is which, which does it apply to?
Understand.
Yeah. But I think it would be from the parking lot because that's the front of the building, which doesn't really do any good from.
Right.
The entrance corridor perspective.
Yeah, good point. Okay. The shared use path, that's really well shown here. Uh, does that continue past that single family home in both directions? I should probably know that.
Right now, it's just a sidewalk without a planting, planting strip right against the road.
So you'll tie into that essentially.
Yes, let me go. Uh, so maybe this is one way to show it. That's a, just a, that's actually a pipe stem of the parcel with the rehab facility. Um, it would continue into a sidewalk.
Okay.
And then on this location, you can.
Yep.
Sort of see the sidewalk there. So it's presumably if this property does get redeveloped, I imagine, uh, they would be encouraged to extend the path across their frontage.
So this shows a dead ending, but obviously it would connect in.
And it would transition to the sidewalk as well.
Okay, got it. Um, I think that is it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
No questions. Anyone else have any other questions for that? Again, remember, we can hear from them again after the public has a chance to speak.
Excellent comment. This is probably more architectural, so you can say Cory, go away if you want to. But, um, looking at the axis of the first entry of a Rio Road West. So if I'm driving a car and I turn in, I'll be driving right into the left edge of the clubhouse. Just food for thought. If you could slide the clubhouse to the left just a little bit, that axis would be centered on the clubhouse. This is driving me crazy as an architect looking at that.
Let me, uh.
So.
So are you talking about this entrance here?
Yeah. So you're looking at the, that edge, exactly.
Okay.
If you drove in, it feels like it wants to be centered, even though it's probably not part of planning commissions per view.
Okay.
Throw that out.
Nevertheless, helpful feedback. Thank you.
Okay, so we, I think we're done with the, the questions for. Okay, so we, I think we're done with the the questions for uh, applicant for now, Ms. Long, so uh, we will move on to uh, hearing from the public. Now, I, because of the audio issues with the online, I don't think we'll be having anyone unless they've called in, and so far not. No one has called in. Is there anyone in the, in the audience who would like to comment on this application? Would have three minutes to make public comment. Okay, no one, no one. All right. So with that, we'll open and close that part of the meeting. Uh, and now the applicant has a chance to come back and add any additional comments that they wanted to add. Are there any additional? Nope, you're done. Is there anything else that planning commissioners would like to ask? Okay, we do have another question for you.
This is sort of helping my, 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 uh, my colleague, Mr. Murphy. So could you say, what, how are you dealing with with um stormwater management on the, on the, on there?
There will be an underground stormwater management facility. Excuse me?
Sorry.
Yeah, there, there's things, you know, I just, just groaned a little bit. Those things can be notorious.
They are challenging. They are more expensive. Again, on a site like this, trying to balance the goals of density and amenities and open space and planting areas, it's often um the best option. I don't know if Mr. Collins is here who uh, designed it, um, has any comments, but that's, it's a challenge.
One, one additional comment. I hate to see people, people put in more surface parking than they actually need.
We agree.
If, if the, if there was more surface parking than you actually needed and were willing to increase the amount of pervious surface in the form of additional green space or planting area, would that be something you would consider?
We actually, um, we are going to be requesting a parking reduction. Much like other multifamily projects in the county, the existing parking regulations end up requiring more parking spaces than units actually require. So what's shown here is actually a little bit less parking than the ordinance would actually require, and we have submitted an application to a waiver request to reduce it. Um, in light of its location and the multimodal opportunities. So um, it may be that it ends up that there are fewer spaces that would provide more space for landscaping, planting other open areas, other biofilters, those types of things. But we're not there yet. We have to. We don't know that we'll get the parking reduction request approved. We're optimistic about it, but.
I, I would, I would strongly encourage there's many ways to use your, your plantings. It's a, where you, you have to have, you're doing these plantings anyway. You can double them as places to treat your stormwater.
Right.
It can be attractive and beautiful, and yet also.
Sort of two functions.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Long has received many emails from me and comments over the years on bioswales and she's heard all about it. And she always passes it on to the applicant, but I would, I would, um, I would say that just to put it in the record that the commission generally recognizes that our parking requirements are quite high. And that is on our list of things to be addressing over the next year or so is to try to look at um, ways to give, give exceptions or even to just change the standards themselves. Uh, for example, when I was on the Charlottesville Planning Commission, which we go that far back, um, we did actually provide uh, reductions in parking for things such as having bus stops and bike lanes in proximity to transportation. We had a whole series of ways that um, you could reduce the amount of paved space. And this is a, a prime spot for something like that, even though it's very car-oriented to society, it's starting to become an area where you could ride your bike to go get Chinese food and bring home or go to the dry cleaner or whatever.
Okay, great. Could I add one more thing in response to Mr. Bivens' comments about the trees? My colleague reminded me if I may.
My trees.
Um, let me get this back up. There is.
I like those trees.
That's good. Just to know that they were your trees.
Yeah, they were my trees. We, we bonded there. Look, there, there they are.
This is not the easiest thing to show with this exhibit, but I'll, I'll start here. The parcel that has the rehab facility is this one back here. Only part of it is shown. This area here, if you can see my cursor, that's, that's part of that parcel. That's a pipe stem. That was actually the original location for the driveway. When this was first plotted. But then at some point, they realized that's right where the curve is on the road and does not meet site distance or safety. So they relocated the driveway here. Unfortunately, to my great dismay, as a real estate lawyer, they did not then vacate or redo the boundary lines on this side. So that becomes almost a wasted area of land. Now, our clients have, our, the owners of the parcels subject to this, have the right under the driveway easement to use that for access, but it does them no good. Unfortunately, it's wasted. The one good thing, as Megan reminded me, is that area is wooded right now and will stay wooded. So it will actually provide some benefit in that regard.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, so on the, maybe it's not the best way to show you right here, but you can see that in this location. So, yeah.
That'll be a lot more pleasant.
Yeah, it helps make that amenity area even a little, I think, cozier. Yeah, so, okay. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to add that.
That was helpful.
And we'll, we're here for, if there's any more questions that come up.
All right. Well, we'll move on to our own commissioner discussion portion. So, uh, anything else you guys want to discuss amongst the commission about this application? We've kind of asked and had answered a number of good questions and comments. Anything else to bring up? If not.
I just had a couple of things just to mention in general, since we've got, so we're in discussion. Um, one is related to sustainability. I think you mentioned the how nice it would be to have this project for, for, for example, as an example of excellence and sustainability and it is like to point out the, you know, that it would be wonderful to get to a point where this county obviously was an example of excellence and sustainability and where developers could be thinking about sustainability in advance and build that into their financial models. And be able to actually then represent to us in plan view and density, what actually had already been filtered through sustainability, sustainable practices, as opposed to it sort of being an afterthought. Um, and I know we're all on the same page there.
But it's still helpful to put it in the records that goes on to the board and, and for the public.
Yeah. Um, on the ARB too, I first of all grateful that there is an ARB, um, and um, wanted to mention, I think we were talking about building six and five, and in my experience, because they're vis- visible, there will be input on the ARB side on those buildings as well. And then, you know, the density piece, I mean, I, I am fully supportive of this project. It's just interesting to see it sort of, and part of it is, you know, all of the great illustrations were exclusive of any of the adjoining properties. And I know that we're not controlling or re- reviewing or the, even the developer has an oversight or impact on the adjoining properties, but thinking of it as part of a community, part of the neighborhood, and including that in some of the exhibits is always helpful as well, and would have revealed things like how do the sidewalks connect? What's the bigger picture? Um, for example, there, and scale issues, right, with adjoining um, parcels. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay. And we didn't, we didn't have a lot of discussion about the requests um, for the exception to modify the step-back requirements. Um, so I don't know what your feelings are on that. We have, this has come up multiple times. We have talked with staff about in, in the future, coming up with some guidelines where we could or, or standards even where we'd say, just like we do with drive-through windows, where we used to have to approve every fast food's drive-through window. And we would have some standards like in the situation, in buildings oriented this way, in these types of locations, step backs are okay, or, or you don't have to do them. They're actually more appropriate for these situations. Um, so I, I feel like we could craft guidance or something with illustrations to, 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 to save uh, time at this dais, reviewing things that we're probably gonna be okay with. Um, so, just to, I just wanted to put that out there. That's still, still our intention, but for now, we have this before us. And I don't know if anyone has any heartburn with the request for the, okay, for the, yeah, for the, for yes, for giving them a break on the step back.
That's only for three buildings, I understand.
Yes, it's for the taller buildings.
Five, six, and then the one in the back.
I had some general thoughts on that, and this is a a bit of a different situation because they have inboarded them uh, to, to minimize the impact on the public street. I guess my thought, and I'm, I'm in general in support of this project as well. What I would say is that I do believe that there's missed opportunities, and we see that in a lot of projects. Hate to start looking at how you redesign and re- and, and lay this out, but I think the opportunities here lie in how we look at the density. And at some point, if we're gonna, if we're gonna truly start talking about sustainability, are there sites that can take more density than even what we're proposing? And I, and, and you know, we, we kind of limit to this three, four-story, but at some point, we may have sites. We do have sites around the county that are certainly appropriate. As we said, this has great amenities around it. And I would say this is one of those sites that with more density, it, it provides for opportunities for more open space. Um, it provides potentially opportunities to do things more creatively with stormwater management. We're taking a wooded lot. It's all you know, pervious and, and, and basically, you know, paving. And so I think that's a missed opportunity. I, I am not sure if, if that what was the term, wasted? Space can actually be thought about in a different way that could actually potentially. Oh, it's not, I thought it was on your, okay, I'm sorry.
That's why they're, they're saying they don't have the access to it.
That was the property line was. Okay, is that not a property line right there? My apologies. So so when it comes to the setback on that, on that um interior road, I think that's a missed opportunity. It does create this canyon effect. Putting your largest two buildings uh, in close proximity to each other. Are there opportunities here uh, to begin to think about how you might um, look at that amount of parking? Hopefully you can have less. That would be great. Um, I would look at, and again, I don't want to get into redesigning this, but as we think about opportunities, switching seven and six. So you don't have two large buildings next to each other. Uh, and perhaps that gives you some more opportunities um, for open space. So I would look at those, those elements. I, I wouldn't be, I mean, I'm not opposed to granting the the step-back uh, waiver uh, because of where it is, but if you relocate those buildings, that building six, one would not have as big as an impact on Rio Road. As, as, as well as create that canyon effect with building five. So things that you can look at as you continue to design this, as you continue to look at opportunities to perhaps minimize the number of parking spaces. Uh, and if there are there more creative things that you can do with stormwater management.
Well, since you got me excited again, I'm just gonna say, I'm still waiting for the development that comes forward with a green roof on top. You can, I, I work, I've seen buildings in others, other communities with green roofs where you can go up on the green roof, sit on a bench with butterflies flying around, and you can treat stormwater up on your green roof and enjoy the great views of the mountains. I mean, there's, there's sort of like the rooftop is, it also can be designed to hold stormwater. You can simply use it as a stormwater facility. So there, there's so much more that could be done to make this a truly green and inviting community, and we're not getting that, that level of creativity in Admiral County yet, and I think that's very unfortunate. And maybe there are things that our county can do to incentivize that better, and that's something I hope that we can look at as we redo the comp plan. Uh, because there are ways to offer incentives for, uh, we did that in Charlottesville where we offered uh, additional density if you put in biofilters, bioswales, permeable pavement, all of that. We did get some developments that did infill with those features because they were able to afford them to the additional density that they got. We got the density we wanted, but we got info redevelopment with green. So we're, we're just not getting very progressive things. Albert Memorial County has a bioswale right outside this building, but yet I rarely see those in developments. Uh, and, and it's not new technology. It's old. It's decades old at this point.
UVA has a lot of examples of, of green roofs, and, and yes, there's maintenance issues, but there's maintenance issues with, with tanks on the ground as well. And so
Green roofs cost more, but they last two to three times longer than conventional roof, so that cost concern goes away. If you're the owner of the building, then a longer-lasting roof that needs actually, and costs less to heat and cool, as this building has a green roof on it right now. Uh, and we've saved thirty percent of our energy costs because of it. So yes, they, they monitored it very carefully. But that's our speech for all developers, not just you, um, but we, sorry, we can't help ourselves. So now with that, um, is there anything else about this particular site that we want to uh, bring up? Are we ready to make a motion?
I would just sort of, I, I, I would, I would just like, Chair, I would just like to thank the applicant for being aware that the project as, as named today is something that won't be how it's named when it's finished. And that they're sensitive, they're sensitive to, to the need to come up with a creative, a creative name for that for, for this project. And, and I would echo what my colleague, um, Lisa said. This is so, so this is going to change. It's one of those projects that's gonna change that corridor. It's gonna change the Rio Road east-west corridor. Because up until now, while it's been, while the speeds on that, on that road are, are quite high at times, um, this is going to be a place that's going to have visible density. Because it's, it's, it's really very residential um, there, and all the density is really off the road. So there's a couple of, of communities there that, that have um, a great deal of density, but none of it can be seen from the road. Okay, so this is gonna be the first place where you're actually gonna see the density. And so I think I'm going with my colleague there and saying, this is a place that really, really has an opportunity to be something really cool. Really exciting, and not simply to be a bunch of rectangles, whether or not they're putty colored or not at the end. But to do something that really says, is one of those entry places into our community, look what we're able to do here and look with, as builders and as developers, we're, we're, we're willing to bring, bring, bring to come next to you. So that's all I ask, is that you've got a, really, I think, a special site. Bring some of your special designs to it, because I think you'll be rewarded. I absolutely think you'll be rewarded.
Okay. Ditto to what you said. All right. So with that, do we have someone who'd like to make a motion?
Oh, he's not here.
The, the commissioner.
Since this became, this came before, oh, um, this came before my CAC. So I will, on behalf of my colleague from the Rio, since this was in the, the hydraulic twenty-nine CAC, I always want to call it the Jactua CAC, but I know I'm gonna get in trouble for doing that. So it's not in here. I would like a motion to accept the, to, to accept the um, the approval of ZMA twenty-twenty-one eleven. The, on Rio. And it, and accept the, as, as the staff have, have brought forward in their staff report.
So Commissioner Bivens, are, are you recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of ZMA twenty-twenty-one eleven?
Yes. I don't have that. Yes.
With the special exception.
Well, I have to do the special exception separate.
Well, we'll, we'll handle the special exception with a separate mo- motion, but you're moving at this point just to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of ZMA twenty-one. Excuse me, twenty-twenty-one eleven for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Staff report, right, yes.
Is there a second? Sorry.
Second?
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Missile. Any discussion? Had a lot of discussion, right? Hearing no other discussion offered, we call the vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Perisana.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to the, the second matter then, which is the request for the special exception.
Ma'am Chair, I would move that the approval of the special exception SE twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-zero forty-one, a special exception uh, to modify the setback requirements for, for buildings as I, as identified and as identified in the staff's report and, and that the staff uh, and the staff's analysis for this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Murray. Is there uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like to. It's a question. So can we make a, a motion that there's in during the site plan phase to look at making adjustments to those buildings, whether it's staggering them, switching them out as we suggested with, with seven. switching them out as we suggested with, with seven, to, to minimize the impact of the mass of both those buildings on that.
You could, I guess the question is whether or not the, the illustrative plan is proffered and therefore the general locations of those buildings are also, they would have to come back for another hearing, because that'd be a real, a substantial change to the plan. So that's what I.
Correct, because what the, what the commission has voted on has been to recommend the, uh, the ZMA. And part of that ZMA is the application plan as submitted.
Not the illustrious plans.
Well, they have our comments, so I guess they can hopefully take those to heart.
Yeah, I mean, they could potentially go between, between now and the Board of Supervisors if they have time and work on a, a different version that they could prevent, present to the board. Yeah. But I don't know anything about their timeframe, their ability to, you know, I, and that's not something for us to be able to be aware of now, but I think that's still worth putting in for the record that you like them to take a look at that before it goes to the board. I don't know that it needs a formal amendment to the motion per se.
That's a question.
Unless you want to make one. Okay. All right. All right. So with that, any other discussion? All right. Can you call the, the roll, please?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Pivens.
Aye.
Mr. Carisana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for your tolerance with all of our technical problems this evening. Hopefully not, that will not happen again. I, I not would, all right? So, um, we'll move on to the next item. Your application will go forward to the Board of Supervisors and hopefully take to heart the many comments you heard to hear this evening. All right. So we'll move on to committee reports. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any committee reports? We'll go left to right. My left.
Do not.
Okay.
It's not met.
Uh, just report out on two meetings. One was the agricultural and forestal district, and I'm gonna hold my comments on that until I've had a chance to look at my notes. Uh, just want to make sure I get it right. The second is there was a Woodbridge Community Meeting, uh, that I attended. And, uh, it was focused on specifically the Woodbridge Solar Project. And there were lots of really interesting comments. Um, they related to, for example, visibility, uh, potential glare, uh, battery mis, uh, storage materials. Um, uh, let's see. Questions about maintenance and ongoing maintenance, and if something happened, how quickly could people respond to the problems? Um, all of these were answered well, I thought, by the applicant. Well, I don't know if they're officially the applicant. I guess they will be in a time to come. Um, there was a question about diminished property value because of the presence of these. Uh, let's see, uh, interesting questions about the transmission line height needing to be increased or pole height that are carrying those transmission lines. Um, asked whether or not, and thought maybe that this might help the unreliable power currently exists. Um, questions about stormwater, stormwater management, how that was being handled on site. Um, lots of other things. Uh, one question about whether they would be restoring wetlands if any were on site to begin with. So that was it.
I have a question on that and it may be answered by you or staff or both. Does the county develop its stormwater regulations for solar facilities that was required by DEQ yet? DEQ required all localities to develop stormwater regulations for solar sites.
I don't believe we have specific set aside regulations just for solar, uh, but we do, it, we do have, uh, they, they are required to meet our water protection ordinance. Um, and so we did see clarification from DEQ as to how to treat, uh, the different types of panels.
Right.
Uh, whether they're impervious or not. Uh, and again, it depends on the type of panel and the type of setup that, that's being implemented. Um, yeah, Bill Fritz has been our, our, uh, primary reviewer with the solar applications that he's been working towards. We've had, if you remember, we've had a few different ones. We've had some over in the concrete boots that were above ground. We've had some that were mounted, uh, that were turnables, some were disconnected. So there's, there's a few different approaches, uh, that DEQ, uh, directs us towards how to treat those.
So you think we're, we're in good shape?
I do.
Ready?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
This is just about, I don't have a report, but I do have a question. We, a long time ago, we saw a, a solar project sort of off of Milton Road. Do you remember that? And I just wondered, did it ever get built? No.
If we're thinking of the same one, I do not believe it has been.
Talking that farm field that was, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yep.
Okay, no committee reports. I don't have any.
I attended the Natural Heritage Committee, uh, where we also brought up, the, the topic of the solar was, was also brought up. Um, particularly the pollinator smart, pollinator smart guidelines that, that are out for solar facilities. And, and, um, and also the merits of performance-based approvals perhaps for solar facilities that can include some of these features that we would like to see, like setbacks, storm, appropriate stormwater management. Said pollinator smart guidelines. E- even in inclusion of agriculture within the solar facilities.
Yeah, I, I would say that our, our county has not yet developed appropriate guidance for solar siting or for solar site design. That in terms of state guidance, it's now available. Some other localities have even adopted percentages of rural area that can be used for solar and specific areas within their county where solar is and is not a desirable land use. So we, we, we have a way to go on that.
Yeah, and we, I think what, what I've seen is that there's many localities that get hit with these super massive solar projects. And then they wish they had guidelines. Um, so I, I would encourage the county to develop some guidelines before we get hit by a project that we regret. Um, and having those guidelines also, I mean, I support solar and having those guidelines upfront and be public means that applicants know exactly what they need to do.
Right. Okay. So no other committee reports. All right. So the next item on is old business and new business. Any, any additional business besides, we just talked about solar? All right. Okay. And, um, items for follow-up, I guess one of the things I'm just curious is if maybe we could just hear a brief report on where the comp planning process is. I know we're working on growth management right now.
Certainly, we'll be back here in two weeks with the work session, um, with staff and I believe our consultants that we've been working with on that. We had a working group meeting today, this afternoon. Uh, we had some open house, uh, options over the past several weeks, um, to discuss some, some, some kind of growth, uh, management options that are out there that based on some of the feedback we've received. Uh, we'll be bringing that to the commission to talk about, also kind of review where we are in the process. Um, and kind of start that theme of where we are, where we want to go, um, what we're hoping to get out of each work session. Uh, we would like to follow a similar approach with the zoning orders, uh, modernization projects we've had. Heard y'all's feedback and I think we need to have a bit of a reset on that, um, and kind of really map out where we're going with that. Uh, and so we'll be bringing that, uh, some more information to you all on that as to kind of a new path forward. Uh, because I think it's been pretty complex as y'all have, uh, experienced and we want to make sure we're, we're going about it the right way. Uh, to tackle this thing over the next couple of years. I will say one feedback that I have received from both of our consultants on these projects is that they would like to find a way to get more time with y'all. Um, the one hour work session is not enough.
It, it, it really isn't.
We all agree with that. And so we're gonna, we're, we're looking into some options, uh, also maybe going into, uh, to, uh, one of our larger conference rooms where we can all actually be around a table, uh, and have a lot more collaboration.
Right.
Um, and ideally try and find about a two hour window. So I don't know if that's starting our work sessions earlier, three o'clock or three thirty or so and going to five thirty or going back to our third night a month, whatever might work. So just think about that and we can come back and talk about it in a couple of weeks. Um, with, with, what, what those options are and I'll bring you some more information on kind of our process.
And if I can just sort of come in as the, um, as the commission's sort of observer at this first phase and remembering that each of us, or each of you, since I will have had my turn, um, ha, will have an, have an opportunity to be an ex official member of the plan. I say it like that because I'm, I'm specific, I'm, I'm intentionally not at the table. Okay, this is the community's, you know, I will come in and, and answer or sort of interject things when I think it would be helpful. But what I will share is that, you know, we live a very privileged existence in what we do. So this group up here, we are very privileged in what we do. Because it's very clear that there is, there are opportunities which are needed to help our community understand just how, um, how multi-layered comp plans, master plans and ordinances are in the, in the build out of our community. And also to help them understand that the market drives a lot of the things that happen. And while we can guide things and we can set up hopefully very smart and, and, and easy to understand policies. If a development, if he or she does not want to bring her dollars to this community, it doesn't matter what our rules are. And so there is interesting balance emerging that I will let you all see when, when Charles comes about whether or not we're a stay still or go forward or whatever, the, that, that sort of looks like for us. Because I think you will, um, you will enjoy wrestling with some of those topics. But I, I will say that I am, I have come away from these, from, from these three meetings, A thankful of their work, because that's very clear. I'm very thankful for the commitment that our colleagues, that are, that are cositoyans are doing. But I'm also very aware that as a body, we need to be, we need to be very thoughtful about how we engage with the community. Because there's still a lot of thought that what we do is magic. And some of it is, but most of it isn't. Um, and so how we sort of navigate that in our community, I think will be something that we'll need to think about over the next few years.
Yep. Just as also as a reminder, uh, Julian's been attending the growth sessions, but we can have up to two commissioners attend without having to call it as a special meeting in the planning commission. So I know that the, one of the challenges that there during the work day, a lot of us cannot get away from work necessarily, but another commissioner could attend also.
There will be many opportunities.
Yeah, yeah, this, this, they'll, they'll be, as we get the schedule, this is going on for a couple of years. Yes, you want to comment?
I just have a quick question for staff too, and I don't want to put you on the spot. Um, just say no if you don't know, but any updates on the affordable housing policy?
Uh, we, yeah, um, we, we did have a work session with the board on that. Uh, we discussed, um, working on affordable dwelling unit ordinance. Uh, and so that'll be some more work that we'll be undertaking over this next year. Um, I believe there's a, there'll be a resolution of intent going to the board soon. If it has not yet already, it might have. Um, for us to initially start working on that and we'll have to figure out what all that entails. Uh, so that's kind of the work ahead on that as well.
Well, I remembered hearing that, you know, there was this tran, potential transition or there was a recommendation that was approved, right, to go to 20% and 60% AMI. And there was discussion about potential developer incentives that would go along with that.
That's all part of this package as to what that actual will be. Uh, those are not set in stone at this point. So we've had some meetings with the public community with, um, other representative stakeholders to try and get their feedback and we plan to continue to work with them to try and figure out what that right balance is, what those incentives are. That'll get us the most.
I think earlier in the year, we did ask for that information to be brought back to this commission. And we were told it would be, so.
Yep, Dr. Batty is still working on it. So as soon as she kind of gets to a point where she's ready to come back, we'll, we'll certainly do that.
Great, thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, um, for, for, uh, folks who may have business trips or vacations that maybe, um, you didn't know about earlier in the summer, just don't forget to let us know so that we can make sure we don't end up in a situation where we don't have quorum. And then, of course, we understand with COVID still raging, you know, there could be a situation you can't control, you suddenly find out you can't come to the meeting. Um, so just email me right away and staff, if you, something happens, like Daniel let me know he wasn't gonna be here. All right. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting until the next meeting that will be held on Tuesday, July the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you.